I just want to tell everyone how much I appreciate you coming to the meeting. As you know from our work plan and from our vision and mission, there was a discussion about making sure that council and all of our boards and commissions were engaged and tied out. So we have had a joint meeting with planning and zoning, but we will be doing this on a regular basis. You guys are critical to the success of the city. I don't think the city manager or I either one are ever in a meeting that we don't mention the fact that our general fund is 41% dependent on sales tax. And Basdrop Art and Public Places certainly contributes to folks wanting to come to Basdrop and spend their money and leave their sales tax with us, and that's a beautiful thing for making our budget. So Sarah's got the bulk of the presentation, but there were a couple of things I wanted to do quickly, both for the people in the room and those at home. Item 2C says, "Discuss the Culinary and Cultural Arts Strategic Plan Report." The realities are that we have -- the draft report was just completed. We haven't had an opportunity to review that, so we will not be discussing that item tonight. It doesn't mean that we won't be doing it when it's appropriate, but we will not be discussing that item tonight. So if anybody's at home and that's why they're watching, I want them to know that we won't be going over that. The other thing, although I know each and every one of you, people at home may not know each and every one of you. So we're going to start with Ms. Yens, and if you will please be careful that you speak into the mic. If you don't speak in the mic, the people that are home on the live streaming cannot hear you. So both when you're making introductions and when we're going through the presentation, because this is going to be a very interactive meeting, but even if you don't like speaking into a mic, please, please do, out of respect for the other citizens. Ms. Yens?
What kind of introduction would you like?
If you would just tell us your name and maybe how long you've been in the board, been on the board, just something brief.
Great, my name is Diana Yens. I live down here in the city, and I've been on the board for six months.
Thank you. Colin, she does not sound like she's on a mic.
Is that better?
It's the same.
The same?
Okay. It didn't seem like it's on.
I can start that one, the same. I speak loud words. Yeah, nothing's happening.
Okay, Colin, are you getting Ms. Yens?
I can hear what you are, which is not very much good with the mic at all.
I'm on top of it, I promise.
So it's there, you just got it.
Okay, I'm sorry. My name is Diana Yens. I live down here in the city, and I've been on the board for six months.
Thank you.
My name is Ann Beck, and I have been on the board for two and a half years.
My name is Marlene Outlaw, and I've been on the board since August.
My name's Andrea Hashke. I was newly voted on the board. This is my first meeting.
I am Matt Hart. I've been on the board for about six months, and I'm the chair.
It's Garnulis. I've been on the board since April.
Two years, Ann. You've been on the board two years.
Joe Albers. I'm vice chair, and I've been on the board for about two and a half years.
Glenda Dain, and I've been on the board about two months.
Dr. Bill Peterson, City Council, second term of City Council.
I'm Nelson, City Council. I've been here since June.
I'm Connie Schrader. I'm the mayor. I've been here since May.
Sarah O'Brien. I am the staff liaison since June of this year for Basdrop Art and Public Places.
I'm Lynn Noble. I'm the city manager, and since we're keeping score, I've been here since March.
I'm Bill Lanis, City Council. Been on the council since May.
Gary Schiff, Mayor Pro Town, since two and a half years.
All right. With that, I'm prepared to turn it over to Ms. O'Brien. Sure, and I'm going to tag team with Linda. We're going to just kind of go over a brief overview about what Basdrop Art and Public Places has accomplished and what committees were identified in 2018. And first, Linda's going to kick it off and talk a little bit about the council's recently adopted mission and vision.
Back in July, we had a council retreat, and during our two-day retreat, the city council created vision. This vision came from the comprehensive plan that was adopted in November of 2016, but there was some tweaking of the works. The best part about the vision, I think, is how descriptive it is. For me, it paints a picture, and that is Basdrop is a welcoming community with a compassion for our diversity, a tapestry of people, arts, and structures, preserving our history and character while embracing progress around our unique environment. And for those that appreciate a vision, that's what we're working toward. Everything that we do should add value to that vision. Council also provided a mission for the organization, and that was to continuously strive to provide efficient and proactive services that enhance our quality of life and achieve our vision. The most important word in that mission is efficient. Council spent a lot of time in the retreat challenging me as city manager to improve our efficiency. That's a value that we share because we all know that we have limited resources, and we need to make sure that we're getting the maximum capacity that we can out of the resources we have. And the way you add capacity is to improve efficiency. So if we're saving time or reducing steps, then that adds capacity for us to do some other things without having to add staff or add resources to the budget. So part of what we have done this year is to build a work plan that has 187 items, and the cabinet, the executive cabinet that works with me on a daily basis, we put together 187 items. And then we took those 187 items and we essentially categorized them by year. And upon review, what we found for fiscal year 2018, which is the year that we are in, we called it the Year of Process, because there's an awful lot of themes in our work plan that are geared toward challenging processes, asking, are we still doing the right things right, or are we doing them because that's the way we've always done them? Well, efficiency requires you doing the right things right, not just because you've always done them that way. So we're spending some time internally challenging the way we do that. And it was really as a part of this component where council recognized the need to meet with all of our boards and commissions, because in a way, we're retooling the organization. You know, every so often, there are defining events or just times sometimes that causes you to stop and recalibrate and say, is what we're doing still the right thing? And if it is, you keep doing that. Hopefully, with new technology and new thoughts being entered into the process, you stop and ask, huh, we should keep that, but we ought to change that. So you don't throw the baby out with the bathwater, but you tweak. And so as we were doing this process, that was part of why council said, you know what? We need to do this with everybody. So the vision and the mission then set stage to the next slide, which was the creation of nine focus areas. It's not good enough to say, we want to have this vision. It's not good enough to say, we're going to have a mission, without giving some instructions on how we're going to do that, because we've got more to do than we can say grace over on any given day. And so the challenge for council to help me was to prioritize what's important. If I have to choose on any given day, what am I going to prioritize? Well, the nine focus areas really represent that. So the first focus area was fiscal responsibility, because clearly, one of the main tenets we have in a relationship with you, our citizen, is to be good stewards of our fiscal resources. So that's really what that looks like. Economic vitality. And that's so important, particularly in light of this particular board, is because we're going to create sustainability by leveraging tourism, infrastructure renewal and investment, enhancing public-private partnerships, that word again, efficient planning and development processes, and fostering an inclusive and diverse environment that encourages entrepreneurial ventures. The reason that that is so critical is 41% of our general fund revenue comes from sales tax. And if you've heard me give any spiel about revenue or talk about the budget, we talk about the fact that we are really in a precarious position. 41% of our revenue in the general fund comes from sales tax, less than a third comes from property tax. And so it takes two to three years, even if we were aggressive in building, to get that on the tax rolls. Well, we've got some challenges with infrastructure and annexation to be able to grow at a pace we can maintain. So what we need to do is stabilize our tax base so that we have an opportunity to grow our property. Well, we've identified a couple of ways to do that, and the first is through tourism. We recognize that Smithfield and Elgin are growing their economies, and we're delighted about that. That just makes all of us that much stronger. But what it does is it shrinks the people coming to Basdrop. There's also a huge, huge threat for us on the horizon, and that is the half-million square feet development at State Highway 130 and State Highway 71. When that goes in in the next two to three years, all of the people from 130 that come into Basdrop to shop will have another option. They'll be in HEB. There'll be other retail that may cause them to stop and not come to Basdrop at all. There may be some retail at 130 and 71 that makes our current retail drive right on through Basdrop and go another 15 miles up the road. So tourism dollars are critically important to us. We need tourists coming, and while we need the heads in beds, I need their hands in their pockets, pulling out their wallets, spending their money when they're here. And that's why Basdrop Art and Public Places is important to this, because there is a tourism element to the art piece to that. Communication really is ensuring that we have quality two-way communication between the city, its residents, and its business. We've made a conscious decision this year, because council is very passionate about our communication with the citizenry. I don't talk in terms of customer service. What I talk in terms is value, because we can be very nice at telling you no, but if we're giving you what you need as a citizen, we're providing you value. And I happen to believe that local government provides great value, but we don't do a very good job of explaining to you that value. I like to call it the quality of life you've come to expect, enjoy, and be able to take for granted. So this year, we changed our film and broadcasting department to a multimedia department, and we renamed Colin Guerrero, back there running the soundboard, as our chief storyteller, because you see, we've got a great story to tell. And so we want to, in plain language, explain to the public what his function is, and his function is to be our chief storyteller. So we are gearing up this year to enhance our programming on our television program, our social media, do more informational videos that are timely, and enhance that communication. Uniquely Basdrop, one of the things that keeps all of you in Basdrop and draws people like me who just got here and are delighted I am here is the uniquely Basdrop quality. I enjoy getting to visit with developers and people that are interested in moving to Basdrop, because by the time we get through telling our story, it's like, can I move here? Yes, you can, because that's really our story, is we need to maintain and enhance our historical community by leveraging the unique combination of our community, our cultural and recreational assets that make us a special place to live and work. Another focus area was organizational excellence, and that's where a lot of our Year of Process items fall. Multimodal mobility. One of the things that we know going forward is we, as a country, are experiencing what is called the perfect storm. Our millennials are a huge demographic set, as is our aging baby boomers. And the one thing they have in common is they don't want to have to rely on the car and a bunch of traffic to be able to go. They want options. So we're enhancing walkability. We're looking at bike share programs. Mass transit. We're delighted that we've got carts here. As a city of 9,000 or less, we have an option on mass transportation, as well as our vehicles. So council was very focused on making sure that we don't choose one over the other, but we make us uniquely Basdrop, because regardless of your mode of transportation, you can get around. Community safety. We automatically think of police and fire, but that's also code enforcement. That's also health inspection, so that we can maintain community safety. That's a quality of life you expect living here, and frankly, we need to always stay focused on that. The unique environment was important, because we need to continue our beautification areas, our natural areas, our green space, our parks, our rivers, and our landscaping, so that when that visitor comes in, they see what we see. And we have that curb appeal and are maximizing the things that make us wonderful, including the river that provides huge opportunities. We need to capitalize on that. And then at the end of the day, we need to do all of those things, but we need to manage growth. We need to plan for it. We need to develop in a way that's appropriate and redevelop so that we maintain our unique feel and character. I think we can all agree, what we don't want is suburban sprawl. You know, we don't want to look like everybody else, but there is a way for us to develop so that we can be uniquely Basdrop and still take advantage of the 156 square miles of extraterritorial jurisdiction that the city of Basdrop enjoys.
Thank you, Linda. I just want to let everybody know, you do have a packet in front of you. I included a copy of the Basdrop Art and Public Places bylaws, board member information, as well as a list of art that the city currently owns that BIAPP has acquired on its behalf, and the annual report that was provided to council, as well as this year's operating budget, and then the requested budget earlier this summer. Many of you know that BIAPP's purpose is to act as advisory board to the council in matters related to the city's Art in Public Places program, with the goal of increasing awareness and appreciation of art, as well as an increase in civic pride through the display of art in the city. Per the current bylaws, the purpose is to expand the enjoyment, access, and appreciation of art in Basdrop. This includes assisting the city council in developing guidelines and standards for the selection, display, and maintenance in the city, and to acquire by purchase or donation works of art for display. 2017 was a very busy year. I can't speak more highly of this group of really dedicated volunteers and the people that have come before the current board and the current board, and that have been working on the city's behalf for many years. In 2017, the annual sculpture call was completed, installing 12 additional sculptures. We also did the plaques, the audio guide beacons, which connect to the Basdrop TX app, and awarded prizes to those artists. The transformer call continued under the leadership of Kathryn Nash, resulting in the addition of eight additional transformers. This was the first year for the 2D art call under Ann Beck, which resulted in the installation of 16 pieces of art in City Hall, the convention center, the library, and the Basdrop Economic Development Corporation office. And then, of course, the annual celebration of art was held in June to recognize and award the various projects and the artists that were involved throughout the year. They also worked closely with Berta and Associates, who was hired, and developed the Cultural Heritage Trail Master Plan for the park at Bob Bryant. Clint Howard of Deep in the Heart Foundry commissioned to produce the Toads in Town bronze sculptures, which if you haven't checked those out, I encourage you to do so. Also participated in the annual yarn bomb movement. If you haven't heard of it, look it up. It's great. Doing the Wizard of Oz yarn bomb down in Fisherman's Park, and then also a couple of special yarn bomb events and activities with the bears out in front of City Hall and Poco de Poco in front of the visitors' center. They also worked with two local artists on painting a mural at the wall of the old Fisherman's Park restroom, which is something everyone should go see. In November of this year, the board adopted the following committees for 2018: the Transformer Call, the 2D Art Call, the Sculpture Call, the Art Celebration, Marketing and Promotions, the Yarn Bomb, and then the Master Plan. When I say that this is a busy group and that everybody on this board works, I mean it. That's not an understatement. It's a very dedicated group of volunteers that are working on behalf of the city and the city's art and the city's tourism program. So they're a group of hard-working individuals, and I have just come on since June, and they don't use my help. They do it all themselves. So very proud and honored to be able to work with this group of individuals. So, in the city's work plan that Linda mentioned earlier, under the uniquely Basdrop category, to maintain and enhance our historic community feel by leveraging the unique combination of community cultural and recreational assets that make Basdrop a special place to live and work, uniquely Basdrop number one was to develop a cultural arts master plan. This was something that was referenced in the comprehensive plan that was adopted in November of 2016, and I think is going to be a big part of the discussion tonight. I know there has been discussion on both sides that BIAPP is a public art board, but that the community does have needs and is BIAPP the right vehicle to work on a community-wide cultural arts master plan, or shall BIAPP continue to focus largely on public art? And so with that, I'll turn it over to everyone in the room. Just please remember to speak into the mics whenever you can. This is an open discussion, right, Mayor?
Yep.
Yep. So I know several of you on the board have expressed strong opinions and may want to chime in, and here's your opportunity to get your one-on-one with city council.
Well, I guess I'll go first on this. Recognize that there needs to be some sort of adaptation with the board itself as we're going into the new year, and that we've heard that, you know, through the grapevine, that there may be possible some other aspects that we're going to be required to look at as more of an umbrella organization when it comes to art in the city as well, and expanding the definition of that possibly.
I have some things that are bothering me that I need to say. I was very disappointed that our budget that was submitted quite early during the budget process was not funded as a line item in the budget, and to my knowledge, no one reached out and asked us to work on the budget if it were not what the city, you know, was interested in trying to fund. You know, we were not given an opportunity to work with anybody to reduce it or slant it in a better direction. And then we were told that it couldn't be funded because there was a plan that needed to be put in place, and we didn't hear about this plan until July. I'm not against doing a plan. I'm just saying that I kind of didn't like, you know, the manner in which it was presented to us, without us having an opportunity to work on it sooner and resolve some of the issues in it. We do have a plan. We've had a plan for five years. It has not been funded. It's the FERDIT Plan for our historical heritage trail and art trail. We had it planned because the previous council was interested in us, or we thought they were interested, in other words, in us pursuing it and creating another destination place for Basdrop. It won't be a destination the first year, because there won't be enough there. It is a five-year plan unless we go to a municipal bond or something like that and get it funded all at one time. And it's not just an expansion of a park. It is a true history, cultural, and art presentation of Basdrop. And this year, quite a few sculptures were bought for that particular plan, because we thought we were going forward with it. The other thing that we have is a reserve, and I was asked, do you plan to spend the money every year and buy sculpture? And the answer is no, because when we buy sculpture for the city, we are very conscientious of its value, and whether it's going to grow, whether it's unique, whether the artist is alive or has died. And we have carefully, carefully, carefully talked about all of the pieces that have been bought for the city, and we can tell you that most of them have, after a year's time, gone up in value. So, no, not always are sculptures presented during our cultural call that we can purchase. Not always do we hear of a sculpture that's a good value. So no. So in other words, we have saved our reserve, which has been about 58,000 a year from you all, and we have 80,000 now. And we have been asked by other committees in Basdrop, like the Design Committee for Main Street and the Historical Committee, if we would consider using this money, not for sculpture this time, but perhaps for an historical event like lighting, lighting our old bridge. And although 80,000 will not light the old bridge, it would be certainly a step towards that, and our president, Matt, is working on the design of that. Three years ago, Kristy Kosh, who was a member, got some idea together, and we actually put the lights on the bridge, but that was not followed through. And so I think we have to start all over again. But so, this is a project, though, that the Parks Department was also interested in going in with us on this too, since it's a historical park. It's a historical park bridge. So if we do not get our funding of our annual gift of around 55,000 to 58,000, then I wonder if the committee is going to want to let go of all the funds that are there and then not have anything, in case, I'm sorry, a special sculpture comes up or a special piece of art. We've not bought any paintings, we've just bought sculptures. So I'm a little bit concerned about that not being in the budget or being a question in the budget.
I'm happy to address part of Ann's concern and it is a timing question. If y'all will recall, we had an election in May. We had a runoff in June and it was June 17th. We got Councilmember Nelson installed. We went through July 4th and as quickly as we could, we had a retreat with council. And council's job, by virtue of the charter, is to provide policy oversight. And they provided the vision and the mission and the nine areas of focus that you were given tonight. The charter says that I have to provide a budget for public consumption so that we can go through it in a very methodical way. We had that retreat somewhere around the 20th or the 22nd of July and I presented a budget on the 8th of August. I would have loved nothing more than to be able to work with all the boards, all the commissions, my staff, and spend the year planning, which we will do this year. But I had three weeks. And what happened in that time period is we tooled the budget around the mission, the vision, and these nine focus areas. And if you'll read the budget, you'll know that we did that. I want to go back to my comment that 41% of our revenue comes from hotel occupancy, I mean from sales tax. And we recognize that our tourism dollars are critically important. And Dale, if you wouldn't mind walking up and sitting here at the table, because I'm going to put you on the spot in just a minute. One of the benefits that we have for tourism is we get just under $3 million a year from hotel occupancy tax. And for those that are at home, hotel occupancy tax is mandated by state law with great specificity as to what it can be used for based on its outcomes. And so, one of the things that we are doing, because we have a mandate to be open and transparent, high level of accountability, high level of efficiency, is to leverage all of our assets appropriately. And so, at this point in time, I'm going to ask Dale to talk about the percentage that can be dedicated to art and what the law says relative to how that art must function. And then we'll tie all of this back to the cultural arts mandate. So this is important.
Thank you, Madam City Manager. My name is Dale Lockett and I am with Visit Bastrop, which is a brand-new 501(c)(6) organization. Primary purpose to market and promote Bastrop for tourism, media, conventions, and sports as well. It is very clear art has a very strong role in tourism. It's been a very strong component of the Texas Tourism Marketing and Promotion for a number of years. Other states have recognized it as well. So there is a definite role and place for art, especially art in public places, as it shapes the community's brand, if you will, and identity and provides a better quality of life for not only the locals who live here, but for the visitor experience. So, I don't think that, at least in this state and in this community, there is an issue with whether or not using hot funds for art is an issue or not. I think, though, that what I've observed, and it's a challenge for every city that has any substantive hot funds at their availability to be used, is you have to ask the question because they are limited dollars, what gives the best return on investment for the investment? It's not a legal question for whether it can or cannot, but there's all kinds of ways that you could choose to spend the money for this. So I think that what it leads and begs the question to is, an example of different projects that could be considered that are art projects, et cetera, is the evaluation of incremental visitation, how much demand will be created for the destination. And quite frankly, if that demand can't be quantified, cannot be identified, then it probably isn't a good investment for the base sense that once you invest that money, if you don't invest it in ways that draw visitors, you've used that money and you have no more money left to do that.
There's a percentage of how much hotel occupancy tax we get that can be dedicated to art?
And I'm spacing on the exact amount. I don't want to speak out of...
I believe it's 15%.
15% is what I was going to agree with.
So, to tie Dale's comments back to the cultural arts master plan, when we only have 15% of our hotel occupancy fund to dedicate to art, and we know art's important, we know that one of the things that makes us uniquely Bastrop is our artists. Communities with a great art community and artists are healthier than those that don't have it. So we want art. We want more art. But the key that Dale said was, you need to have it in the context of a picture so that it can be, or in a strategy, so that it can be leveraged. And what we visited with Ms. Beck during the summer or in the fall was, it's quite possible at the end of this study, the art in public places is absolutely the right answer. But we need to study that so that we can look at art in 2017 with the budget challenges that we have, with the threats at 130 and 71, with the threats that we're seeing every day with our sales tax. Is this the right answer today? So this is not an indictment that we don't think art in public places is not important. That's not what we're saying at all. We just need to do a gut check today with the conditions that we have, the threats that we know are out there, so that we can make the absolutely best decision. And it seemed appropriate since the art board that reports to council, and they're counting on this board to be the recommendation for the policy, that the cultural arts master plan that was asked for in the comprehensive plan for the very reasons I've stated, seemed to be an appropriate place. I have apologized to Ms. Beck. I wish we could have done it differently, but we were up against the wall to take that vision and that mission and we didn't have 18 months to lose to wait till next year to do all of that. So it was really an unfortunate timing situation for which I regret, but it is what it is and we do the best we can with the hand we're dealt. So that kind of gives all of you and those at home the perspective of what caused that conversation to happen and how we're evolving at this point.
And just for clarity for everybody at home, there were two budget items that were requested by BIAPP that were not funded. Those funds were not reallocated somewhere else, but they were not funded. And that was $42,000 for the Cultural Heritage Trail project and then the $55,000 in public art acquisition. All of the other projects for the Sculpture Call and marketing and advertising, all of those were funded as requested.
If I may?
I guess we were just, we've worked really hard on the Cultural Art and Heritage Trail and I guess we sort of need to know whether, at some point in time, when we can afford it, if it is going to go forward or if it is a project that, you know, we are going to have to forget and leave by the wayside. I guess that's what I'm kind of wanting some direction on.
And I think the master plan, Ms. Beck, will be the key. If it recognizes it's important and we can leverage it, then it will appear and be something we can all be supportive of. But if it isn't the right answer, then hopefully a better answer will appear. So as we said to you, this is not, we're not far the Cultural Arts Trail, but millions of dollars is what it's going to take for that Cultural Arts Trail and we need to know beyond a shadow of a doubt that's the right investment. And so if it is, it'll still be the right answer 12 months from now.
Ms. Alberts?
I think, you know, to Ann's point, we did work hard on that, so we want to make sure it's done right and we want to take the time to make sure that it's the right investment. So I think waiting until we have the master plan makes sense from my perspective.
There's one factor too that Ann mentioned. When you're buying art pieces and sculpture for a city, that is a large investment, but it has an intrinsic value as an appreciating investment. I mean, you look at the Moreau sculptures and Louise Nevelson that even small towns have bought and they have appreciated to their benefit. So I think that's kind of an underlying awareness we need to have, that that's not a depreciating asset. In that market, it could be very well-leveraged for us if we needed to.
I want to go back and talk about what the manager said earlier about community safety. We talk about trails, we talk about art, which I love the art, I love the trails, but the council has to focus on our sidewalks when we talk about connectivity to get to see these art pieces, our sidewalks and our streets. We have to focus on that and then kind of move forward. And we can almost do both of them together, but our sidewalks and our street needs attention foremost and foremost we need to move forward with those to where people can get out and see the art. If you can't get there, you can't see it. And I know we're trying, I know the manager's trying to work on sidewalks and streets because we've been talking about connectivity for years because there's areas around Bastrop that need sidewalks that doesn't have them. And we're still trying to work on that to where we can get to where we need to be to get people to where they can get around the city to see this art.
That's a good question. Have we defined cultural arts? Does it include music?
That's the question.
And that's, I think, with the BIAPP, since I've come on board and we went through the budget process and that $55,000 and $42,000, like I said, it wasn't reallocated. We just didn't put it in the BIAPP budget because there is such a question about what is the cultural arts? We have an opera house downtown. We have a history museum. We have culinary arts. We have the need for street performers and musicians and we're doing a music festival in May and so there's a wide range of arts. And so I think what BIAPP really needs to move forward is clear guidance from council as to what council sees its cultural arts and what they want to see included in a cultural arts master plan.
You know, certainly from my perspective, my impression had been that the focus was exclusively on exterior sculpture art with a little bit of time and attention to 2D art that was interior. So I think that that's been my perception as a member and I don't, I'm still not clear if that's exactly true or if the city council wants to have a broader definition and/or wants this committee to be the ones to have a broader definition or do we need a different group to address the bigger picture?
And that also, that brings us to the current bylaws. When the bylaws were written for the board, it was defined as public art that was visual, only visual. And so then the question is, you know, should this group evolve to be something broader? To Sarah's point, there's been discussion about the need for broader cultural arts management for the city. I'm curious what the vision is of the council for what does that encompass and is that something that we should focus on? Should we be working with another organization to do that and how do we go about pursuing that goal?
So I'd like to make a comment about that since I'm the person that gets to appoint people to all of these boards and commissions. When I took office, there were 15 boards and commissions and we have not completely finalized the process, but I think the folks that were at our first annual boards and commissions, two of those are going to be sunset. It may not have legally happened yet, but two of them will be sunset. So from my perspective, I think this is an excellent topic for this group of people to have because I believe that we need to have a board that looks at all aspects of art. And if that in part, you guys are going to own the other part of that discussion because I think it can come together in many ways. We can have a cultural arts board and we can write the bylaws for it and start from scratch with a brand-new board. And Bastrop Art in Public Places, if people are only interested in doing visual art and if you go to the letter of the law of the bylaws of BIAPP, that can become a committee. You can have a committee on music, you can have a committee on culture, you can do that as subsets. But I realize, not only am I only one voice, I'm a voice that doesn't get to vote, but I am not, I will be talking against folks who want to add six more boards because BIAPP's doing visual and we need to have a music board and we need to, I am not interested in that. I don't think that's a good way. I do think if we had one board that's an umbrella over all of it, it seems to me they are the most logical, whoever the bodies on that board end up being, that's the most logical place to have, to own the master plan that's mentioned in the comprehensive plan and gets that master plan approved, blessed by city council. And then that can easily, to use some of the vernacular that we've all come accustomed to, they can develop a work plan and know this year, we're going to put part of our budget to the music group or what. Then you can come up with a work plan and cover all of those aspects. So with that, I'm interested if any of the other council members have a view on that, but I fairly strongly do not want to create six more boards. It just really stresses our staff and I'm not sure that that's a good use of time. So Matt or anyone else that would like to comment?
Well, I think there's probably two points I'd like to speak on that. I think, one, the general feeling has been that is where we're going, whether or not we wanted to go that direction or not expand, because I think what it's going to do is cause quite a bit more work for everyone else involved. But we do know that, the same thing about efficiency and institutionalization, we don't want to be, we don't want to fall back into something in the past that might have worked then, but it's not working now for us. And, you know, we've talked about maybe modernizing, you know, the art or the way that we enjoy Bastrop as a tourist destination. It doesn't mean it's just 2D art, it doesn't mean it's sculptural art. You know, the master plan had been, you know, integrated into that for the sculpture because we could buy sculpture and put it there. But that doesn't mean that it won't be, you know, done in the, you know, sometime in the future. It has a lot of great, I think, aspects to it. But there's other things that we're looking at too as well, too now, like use it, food, things like that. Do we want to be known as just a little historical town? Well, there's a lot of historical towns in Texas. We want to have something else that can cause housing difference. And not to go on for a very long time on this, but I think that's, from what I understand with the council is that, or, and I think overall, is what people want to see, is something a bit more eclectic.
Can I mention something? And you and Ann Beck? I had a concept, might I hand this to you? It's a joint community and public spaces working group. Can I hand this to you? To Matt as well? I think kind of addressed it.
Yeah, you'll need to speak, hand it off to Matt and we'll pass papers around, but I need you to speak into the mic or they can't hear you.
But it's a concept. I have seen work in the city of Austin. They have a joint sustainability group where you have between 501(c)(3) and council groups, city council groups. They come together. There's one person who stands as a representative. And this is a way for them to come together as an organization and further what you would maybe call uniquely Bastrop, coming from these different groups that have something in common and yet are disparate groups, allowing them, when they meet, to like cross-communicate, maybe develop ideas, but then have someone report from the city council when they have that joint group. So it would take in like the culinary, your music, the arts, the new arts center, that everybody would have a voice and a stake, but the funds go to the city council. All it would be is recommendations to come forward, working with the whole arts community in total. Since Ann was mentioning the historic trail or the Cultural Heritage Trail, I saw that there was also an overlap with our parks that work synergistically with the arts community. But I just wanted to throw that out as a concept, is to maybe develop a joint art community where they aren't necessarily tasked or need to report to you or are funded, but it allows them to cross-communicate and move forward jointly. So we understand each other and we don't kind of carve out our silo, but that we work together.
This looks like a really good concept. Whatever we do, we need to have a Visit Bastrop at the table because they're going to be the ones that kind of put their imprimatur on what's going to attract tourism in their mindset and should help us move down the line in that respect, I would think.
I think Andrea, I think what you're articulating here, and you've done a good job of it, is one of the elements that we have, we should incorporate somehow in the master plan and that is that we don't need silos, to use your word. We really do need, we need to be in touch with our Main Street board representatives. We need to work with the Arts Center. I find it almost appalling that we have almost no joint together working with the Arts Center and BIAPP. I know that Matt's on that board and I know that Ann's been involved in it and there are others that have been very active in the Arts Center, but as far as an active, ongoing relationship... But as far as an active, ongoing relationship, well, we really haven't done anything. And that goes back to the term historic. I agree with Matt. As you drive through the state of Texas, I can assure you, we are not the only city that claims to be the most historic city in the state of Texas. Almost every city is. And, and while I, that's an element and it's referred to up there under uniquely Bastrop, there, we also need to have a face that says, we're modern, we're progressive, we're, we're with it. And many of our sculptures reflect that sort of image. The arts center, $4 million and it's a, it's a great architectural piece that reflects the kind of environment that a high-tech company might want to come here and relocate because that's another aspect of Bastrop. We aren't just a quiet shady little town. But I, I want to go back to what I was saying initially and regardless of what administrative construct we use to, to affect this, I think there needs to be some regular communication between the opera house, Main Street, us, parks and the arts center and, and the historic society. So I think that concept is, is like I said, well articulated here.
Again, I, like I said, I templated it off Austin with the joint sustainability. They have refuse, they have energy, they have water, they have food. And from each of these groups, they had voted a representative and they meet once a month to discuss so that they can move together on a sustainability agenda for the city of Austin to meet their criteria or their goals. And it works well.
Well, the one thing that I like about it and that I want to make sure that council is real clear to you guys about is you kept hearing efficiency over and over. Our second favorite word is leverage because we, the, those hot funds, those sales tax dollars, they're, they're precious and we need to leverage them. And so ideas like this where people are working together and we can combine things. I know Dale's talked with me about, and I'm going to steal Linda's thunder, it may not be what brought you here, but it's what keeps you here. And if you have an event that is maybe Saturday afternoon, if there's a way working with the other groups that people get here Saturday afternoon and there's something to do Saturday night and I can go see a play Monday, Sunday afternoon and they stay and they spend the night, that's, and it's not triple the cost to us because those, that those efforts have been leveraged, that's absolutely in the right vein. Did I steal what you were going to say?
No ma'am. What I was going to say is I really love this model because it's very similar to the one council worked with the, what's now the Visit Bastrop Board is the Hyatt has a seat, the small hotels have a seat, arts, music, nightlife. And so all of those elements are represented on Visit Bastrop with the concept that each one of those would have a working committee that gets input from that aspect of our community to make sure that they're marketed and represented. So that model is very much like what we've done on the marketing aspect. So it would be easy, I think, to replicate. So congratulations. Thank you for bringing the obvious to us. So thank you.
That being said, is there anyone that has a concern about it? Mayor Protem Schiff?
Well, I wanted to go a little even, a little, even go a little further on the leverage and efficiency aspect. That's been one of my mantras all along. And in fact, I'd, I'd like, Deborah's not here this evening, but I'd like to echo what she brought to the council on multiple occasions. And that is trying to turn art into function. You know, if there's a way that we can make art functional, we had a presentation from a hot funds expert who said that we have some fairly broad abilities to spend monies in, in the art arena and, or even in the, in the hot fund arena as, as well as the art. But, you know, I was thinking about, I think what Ann said earlier about, you know, could funds be used to light the bridge or something like that? To me, that's leveraging. That is saying, you know, let's, let's do more than just light that bridge. Let's make that bridge a real piece of art. Let's spend some serious money to do something nobody's ever done on a bridge before and accomplish, you know, many, many things with, with that type of an effort. So, you know, I would really challenge B I A P P to look, you know, what can we do to really contribute? Not just visual art, not just performing art, but, you know, adding some function here to this, to the city, to the city of Bastrop and, you know, leverage and efficiency.
I'd like to speak to that for a moment too as well. On the bridge itself, and just because I've been working on it and took it over from Christie, you know, we are looking at doing a kind of a three-phase or a phased situation on that. And the reason we feel that it's important is that, you know, you have the convention center, the arts center, and then you have the bridge going down Chestnut. Main Street, it's grown as much as it's going to grow. If we want to have anything in the future, we need to have another access. And that is one of the things that that bridge can be. And it can be an area where too, that if we light it correctly and we do what we want to do with it, it's going to be another interesting, fun thing about Bastrop. You can, we can light it to basically reflect different times of the year. We can do it so you can have art festivals on the bridge, things of that nature too, where people come into town and they'll spend the night because they're going to have a lot of things that they can do. And then, you know, it'll just add on to Main Street and then it'll help development move down the street as well. And that's why I think that we feel like that's actually a very important kind of a, I would say, a light art project that we're looking at. Kind of like the Jean Villeneuve style of design when it comes to that. My background's construction, but it is also art too. So I like to blend both of that together. So if you can take something that is structural and is all about function, but then add something else to it that makes it really neat, that people like, they're going to come and want to look at it. It's just like that steam engine out there. People come in and look at it and get out and take pictures with it. That's the same thing that bridge can do as well. And it'll be modern looking, but also historical.
I, I think this is an excellent idea also. And I think by, by working in groups like this, conjunctively, that's the word, jointly, then what, I think what Bastrop is really missing is a wow factor. And I don't have an answer for it, but I think with all these brains working together, all of these minds, we can come up with something. And it doesn't necessarily have to be one wow factor. It can be several, like the bridge, the arts center, to where people are saying, let's go to Bastrop, there's so much to do. That's what we need.
I, I want to mention, I, I like the idea of the bridge being another node because on the other side of that bridge, our economic development corporation has funded a trail. So it, it just, the, the more things there are to do that keeps you in town and now you're walking on that trail, that trail could have some art sculpture on it. You make the loop with the trail, go back across the bridge and oh, now it's, you're on Main Street and you're hungry. Well, isn't it great because you can get something to eat, you know? So things to have interest and the nodes to move people throughout town. I think I, I really like the idea of that. Councilmember Nelson, any, do you have any things to say? Any comments?
I'm probably the least qualified person to speak on art. So I'm going to speak from the representative side. We talk about value added. We also got to talk about real value and perceived value amongst all of our citizens. What are we giving our citizens when we talk about these art projects? And I think if we begin cross-pollinating, as we've been discussing, I think we're going to involve more citizens, get, generate a little bit more interest amongst our citizens. And we should always remember that the Sistine Chapel was not painted in one session. And that this is going to be a long-term process for us to generate interest within our city, both as a unique historical destination, but also as Ed pointed out, a modern destination. So that's, that's pretty much me from the art perspective.
Okay, Sarah, do you have other things you want to go over?
No, this was the only work plan item that has kind of held, that relates to B I A P P and has held B I A P P up the last couple of months was the development of the, the master plan and with B I A P P the vehicle. And it sounds like from what the mayor said, that B I A P P is the vehicle to spearhead and coordinate with this broader group to develop this plan that encompasses much more than just public art.
And that, that's what I was going to speak to. But I want to be extremely clear. The whole point of this is for us to be real honest with each other. Does anyone have concerns about, and, and I don't think, Ms. Hashkey, you're saying this is absolutely how it has to be, that this is a jump off spot?
Yeah.
And, and we're all seeing it for the very first time, but if you are sitting there with a concern and boy, I sure don't want this to happen, now's, now's the time to bring that up. Is, does anybody have anything they'd like to speak to about that?
This isn't an expression of concern, but one of the, one of the, well, it is, I guess, now that I think about it. One, one of, one of the concerns that gets raised every time we talk about expanding the brief of B I A P P is person power. And, and, you know, people say, well, this group of people have been working so hard and, and there are only so many hours in a day. And all of that is true. The thing that we could consider, and I, I think we should consider, is expanding, if we expand the brief of B I A P P to include these other things, performance art and, and the other issues that were raised, then we need to think more in terms of the people who are currently on the board having more than just themselves to volunteer, to be available. When the, when the yarn bomb project was done, Catherine Nash, I don't know how many volunteers she had. Matt, do you know?
It was close to 20. I was one and I brought five more people with me.
Yeah, yeah. And that's the model I think we need to have, is that if we expand, again, the brief of this board to include other things, we need to look at finding other people who are willing to work on, say, performance art, for example. And we may do, may need to revisit the budget that B I A P P has to see if we want to carve out, as we do the master plan, carve out a section of that budget for a different direction. And while I know that Linda and all of the staff worked very hard preparing what you, what you've done for the city and for the council, the rest of us, it's not engraved in stone. I mean, things can change. And if the council in its wisdom, and, and we're an instrument of, of what you are, if, if you're in your wisdom, you decide, well, okay, if you folks are going to take on this, then we'll look in the budget somewhere and see if we can't find the resources necessary to do the bridge or to do performance art or whatever. That's the way I'd like to look at the world. I hope that's realistic.
Ed, I think that's absolutely the point of the plan. So often people are willing to support something if they understand the why. So often we do things and we never address the why. It's just, it's important to Matt, so we did it, or it's important to Marlene and we did it. And the why's never there. So it dies when Matt gets off the board or it dies when Marlene gets off the board. If you have a plan and it is something that's a living document that gets implemented and people understand the why, then it's easier for us to allocate resources because for us, it's an either or. We can do this or we can do that, but we can't do both. And so the why becomes important. And if we understand the why is going to drive tourism and the wow factor puts us on the map. When we have a music festival, instead of getting 5,000 people here, we're going to get 15,000 people here, well, I now know why we're doing that. We can quantify the why. And so absolutely you, you've underscored why we know that master plan is so hugely important because you only have to read social media feeds. It doesn't matter what we do, there's somebody out there that wants the other thing we couldn't do because it's an either or. And so we need to make sure whatever dollars we spend, wherever their source comes from, is that we understand the why and the why leverages back to protecting our sources of revenue until we can grow and expand and be something different. Because if we don't, then that leaves us with fewer options that none of us like. So thank you for that. And I'll concur and validate you from a completely different reason, but thank you.
So moving forward, and, and we may not have the answer tonight, but as I look at this, we already have a Main Street board. The marketing I would think would be Visit Bastrop. We have an HLC and I know the historical society has their own board. And the Bastrop Opera House has its own board. So again, I'm really not interested in adding four more boards. So what I, what could possibly play out is that maybe Bastrop Art in Public Places has its, its own board, but maybe it's a board that council's not involved in because council's involved in the joint committee and making sure that there's fair representation so that when those groups of people get together, that there is somebody with a music interest, that there is somebody from the historic society. That, is that kind of, or Sarah, do you need an opportunity to review it or, you know, I'm a next steps kind of person?
I, I don't think that you're going to have that answer until we develop the master plan. And I think that B I A P P needs to be the vehicle that the plan is developed through in conjunction with these partners. And I think that a master plan, a cultural arts master plan typically will identify those bodies and how those bodies interact together to get us to the end goal.
So would B I A P P be agreeable to being the, the vehicle for helping develop that master plan? Or are, do you not have an interest in doing that?
I think it'd be fine. I, I can't speak for everyone here on the board, but I, I believe that that would be perfectly acceptable. I would, I would love that challenge.
Actually, in speaking with Ann, it seemed like doing the, the heritage trail, that that was falling under the B I A P P's purview and that it was more cumbersome for the members. This way I was thinking it was a way to maybe share the, the burden of development, maybe again, making the costs are more, used better because more people are involved in it. Again, why are we doing it when you have more people involved? So it, it doesn't, everything doesn't evolve or require B I A P P to do it as much as having other people participate.
Okay, I think you're the step past because I think the discussion that we're having is developing a master plan. And so here's my example. One model is, and, and we, as we've stated, the money wasn't given to somebody else, it just wasn't allocated. So that there are, there is a certain amount of money that is available. So that means whether it's a consultant or however we would do that, it seems to me that Sarah would be the staff liaison for that. So there, in, in my mind, there are two ways to accomplish this master plan. Either the B I A P P does that or much like a comprehensive plan, you form a committee whose goal is to deliver a master plan. And it may be several folks from B I A P P, but it may also have, there may be someone from Main Street. Like when we did the comprehensive plan, we had more than one person on planning and zoning, but we had people at large. We, we came up with a group of folks and they only existed to complete the comprehensive plan and then they were disbanded. So we can, to me, that's kind of the two options. Either you guys own it and you could have some guests come on and, and add on to your board ex officio or however you want to, you know, we can, I don't want you to feel like you don't have the right help. The other option is to form some sort of committee that does nothing but finish the master plan. That, that, Sarah, am I making sense?
No, I think that those are both very viable options. I think whether it's, and B I A P P, I believe in 2016 formed a master plan subcommittee. It hasn't gotten off the ground yet. And so you guys already have a subcommittee that can, you know, accomplish that goal. And I think any master plan that's about cultural arts and something that's so passionate to so many people in the community is going to involve input from a to so many people in the community is going to involve input from a variety of organizations. It wouldn't just be something that B I A P P has input in. I know that you guys would seek input from all of our community partners throughout that process.
I have a question about the Culinary and Cultural Arts Strategic Plan. I may have missed, is there a timeline for when we expect that?
We got a copy on Monday afternoon, and Linda has been in training all week, so we have not gone down to review it, but I think at our January board meeting, we will have a draft for everybody to look at and be ready to talk about it then.
I was just thinking that if we're talking about a cultural arts master plan, that it would flow out of the strategic report.
Absolutely.
That it'd make more sense to wait for the report before we start a plan.
Yes.
Can I have some clarification? You're not throwing at Ms. Hashkey's plan, you're just saying you're giving the design of this to B A I P P.
Through, I think that this working community group will be a result of the master plan and that the master plan will help define how that group is made up and what function that group serves.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Maybe depending on how much work we actually wind up keeping in the B A I P P, maybe we have to look at our bylaws and, you know, what our scope is, how many people we have on our board, because I think we're maxed out, aren't we, on our board? We're at the limit already and we're already all working pretty hard, so maybe if we wind up with a lot more work on our plate, that we could have more people as well.
That's right. So the master plan might, I'm not predestined, the master plan result could be that the Bastrop Art and Public Places, it becomes its own board, they pick their own members and they're six, and they cover these types of things, and that the board that council's appointing and the board that council gives funding to is this joint committee group in some form or fashion, and then there, you know, there's one source that's helping make sure that money's leveraged across whatever it's going to be spent on. And I don't really know how all of that works yet, but that's because we don't have a master plan yet. That's what I'm seeing.
I think all of these questions underscore the need for the plan.
We haven't had a chance to talk about this. I have to take, I mean, as long as we have a representative from the committee to work on the master plan, and not everybody on the committee has to work on it, because I don't want to work on it. That's not what I want to do when I'm serving on an art committee. I'm sorry, I don't want to do that. So as long as we have representatives who volunteer to do that, we can certainly have a report from them at every meeting, but I don't want to spend every meeting from now on for five or six months talking about a master plan. Those are my personal feelings, I don't know how anybody else feels.
Well, I don't think that's what we're actually talking about. I think it's going to be, you know, the whole idea of what we've been doing is picking people from different areas so we can actually have the expertise that needs to be on that. So you would be, you know, you would still keep on doing what you're doing. I would be working on the master plan, you know, with some other people I would assume go and whoever is on it right now, I have to look at my notes on that. But I don't think there's an issue going ahead of that at all. I don't think that your concern is that you would not be doing what you want to do right now, what you're doing right now. I don't think that's a problem.
I think Sarah mentioned that it had been a subcommittee at one point, so it sounded like we would just be gearing up a subcommittee and they could solicit help.
And that committee was adopted by the board in November, approved as one of the working committees for 2018.
Council, do you have, are you comfortable? Because I really want to say to Sarah and to B A I P P, go forth and master plan. You know, let us know if you need us, but council, do you have any other comments or suggestions that you want to make sure are shared?
I applaud what we're talking about here, if only for it, out of this, we're going to get a good idea of what we're talking about with cultural arts.
Okay, Ms. State, and I have to pick on you. You've been very quiet. Do you have any concerns or anything you'd like to share?
No, I'm totally lost. I missed the November meeting and I have no idea what is going on. I'm sure I'll catch up, but I wish I was in the country, so no.
Okay, well, I'm jealous that you were out of the country, and it's, I'm perfectly happy with you being lost. What I don't want is you not, having something on your mind and not saying it. That was the only point.
I have a lot to worry.
Okay. All right, well, it is 7:15. I know we were scheduled to go through 7:30. Are we, is there any city managers, Sarah, anything else we need to cover?
I think y'all have appropriate direction to talk about at your next board meeting. The commitment that council has made is that they're going to meet with every board and commission at least once. There are a couple that they know they're going to meet with multiple times. This master plan is clearly important. It's clearly important to us to hopefully get some closure to it if possible before we go into the next budget year. Sarah will coordinate with me and I'll talk to the mayor and council. If we need another workshop, we want to do that. So this is not the ending, it's the beginning. And as y'all get to that point, y'all have some, well, I wonder if this would work better or that, and we're kind of at the stopping point, so we get some direction, then let's have another joint meeting. We'll come back and do exactly what happened tonight, dialogue and give some consensus because council doesn't vote in a workshop, but can give you some policy guidelines and we brainstorm and then we move forward. So we're not throwing you to the wolves. This is just a great conversation to help, I hope, clarity. And then when y'all get to that point, Sarah will let us know and we'll put you back into the plan and we'll schedule another joint meeting. We may have to have a couple between now and hopefully June or July because we would like to have this resolved and some questions answered so we don't have next year look like this year. So thank y'all in advance for all of your hard work.
And Sarah, as we're finalizing things, because the master plan's going to cost something, so Sarah has the ability to bring items to council for voting, so, you know, we don't want to be a stumbling block. We want things to help move forward. And we also, the council meets twice a month, so we can do workshops ahead of that meeting, but, you know, those are days that we're generally all in town. So there's ways we can move forward with this. We don't want you to feel abandoned, but we equally don't want you to feel micromanaged by us. We want you to do your thing. Ms. Beck, were you going to say something?
I just wanted to make an announcement that the person who won our 2D art prize, first prize, also won a major prize in Austin. It's called Can Canada, and she's been having a reception to celebrate this. She's from Eastern Europe, we think from the Ukraine. Her name is Mila Sketch. So we're real proud of the fact that we happened to choose a number one and somebody else chose a number one, too.
Excellent. All right, Matt, I'm, from council, I'm calling this meeting adjourned.
As the chair of Bastrop Art and Public Places, I will second that motion as well.
We are adjourned. It's a workshop. And for those of you at home, I believe our next meeting starts at 7:30 with Main Street. So we're going to go silent till we get together at 7:30. Thank you so much for your time. Appreciate it.
Thanks, folks.
Thank you.
Okay, it's 7:31, and I have a quorum in the room. Mr. Smith, it looks like you equally have a quorum in the room, so on behalf of city council, I'm calling this meeting to order. Mr. Smith?
End of the mic.
End of the mic.
And I call the Main Street Advisory Board to order.
All right, for those of you at home, this is our special workshop between city council and the Main Street board, and we just completed our joint workshop with B A I P P, so I'll go over some ground rules again. We won't be voting on anything tonight. The intent is to have a free share of information between council and the board. If you are at the table, please, please speak into the mic, and you have to get really close, because if you don't speak into the microphone, they can't hear us at home and they, it makes them very unhappy. So we want, it's recorded and we need to get everyone's comments mentioned. Council has made a commitment to all of our boards that we want to all be on the same page. We, you've seen the development of our budget, you are familiar with the fact that we have a work plan. The city manager's going to go over a portion of that here in a moment. And if you come to all the council meetings, some of it'll be a repeat. For some of you, it may be new, and for those of us that don't look at it every day, it may be a good review either way. Council's committed, you guys are important, we are all working together, and we just really appreciate your time, and the intent of this is to share some ideas and make sure we're all on the same page moving forward. For the benefit of the people at home, I'm going to start with Ms. Long. If you would please speak into the microphone, tell us your name and how long you've been on Main Street board, or if you, you know, what you're doing on the board or whatever, just so everyone can know who everybody is. Ms. Long?
Jennifer Long, two months. Dick Smith. I joined the Main Street program in 2008, the board about two or three years later. I've been chair for the last three years.
Hi, my name's Steve Bridges. I've been on the board for about 18 months. I'm concerned with the Economic Vitality Committee and my special interest is local food issues.
Shanda Hernandez, I've been on the board for six months and I'm on the organizational committee.
Jeanette Andre, I've been on the board for approximately five years.
Terry Moore, 18 months, and I'm the promotions chair.
Bill Ennis, city council, first term.
Law Nelson, city council, first term.
Connie Schrader, mayor, since May.
I'm Sarah O'Brien. I'm your Main Street director. I started the City of Bastrop Main Street program in April of 2016, but I have been serving as a Main Street director since 2008.
Lindambo, I've been city manager here since March.
Gary Schiff, mayor pro temp, about two and a half years.
Mayor, may I also introduce two members of the Main Street leadership team.
Please.
Who are co-chairs of our committees, two of our committees.
Okay, you can't hear, but that was Sean Plesh, and she is in charge of organization.
Co-chair of organization committee.
And she claims to have been here since the beginning, and I'll let y'all interpret that anyway.
Of what?
Not going to touch it, ma'am.
That was 2007.
Okay.
Bonnie Coffey, Economic Vitality, since 2009, 2010-ish.
Thank you guys very much for coming and for going over. If you are looking at your agenda, we will be actually doing 2B first. Is that correct, Sarah?
Well, we're going to do a general presentation. I'm going to let Linda talk first, and then we'll talk about the specific work plan items under 2B.
By the time the evening's over, we will have done both 2A and 2B. Ms. O'Brien?
I'm going to turn it over to Linda first to talk a little bit about the council's recently adopted vision, or mission and vision, as well as their nine focus areas, and then we'll talk a little bit about Main Street in general and then get to the 2018 work plan.
Back in July, council had a retreat, and just from a timing perspective, we had an election in May. We had a runoff about the 17th of June. Council member Nelson was sworn in at the last council meeting in June. We went through July 4th, and the soonest we could have a retreat with council to do some strategic thinking and planning was around the 20th of July. I submitted a budget for council consideration on August 8th. So the time from the retreat until the time the agenda was presented, I didn't sleep much. I went home and did two weeks of pretty intensive budget work with my team so that that was my sole focus. The outcome of that was, we took the vision and the mission statement that I'm going to cover in just a minute, and we have aligned all of the organizational, operational items around the vision, the mission, and the nine focus areas. If you read the budget, it's tied to all of that, and an outcome of the budget was 187-item work plan that is divided by the nine focus areas that we'll talk about. So all of that's to say that this is very strategic and was part of the alignment process that we're going through this year to make sure that we are set up to fulfill our vision and our mission, and they're not just words on the page. So I always love getting to talk about the vision because I think the vision statement is so descriptive. It really paints you a picture when you hear it, and that is Bastrop. A welcoming community with a compassion for our diversity, a tapestry of people, arts, and structures, preserving our history and character while embracing progress around our unique environment. And council started with a vision that was a part of the comprehensive plan that was adopted in 2016, and they tweaked that based on the kind of community and organization this council would like to see. Excuse me. And the vision is just that. That's what we strive to be. That's what, when we have conversations and ask internally whether or not this is relevant, we always start with, how does this fulfill our mission? Does this add value to our vision? The answer is yes, then we debate it some more. If the answer's no, then we just need to park that and move on to something else. Our mission is really how the organization functions. What is our purpose? And our purpose is really clear. It's to provide, to continuously strive to provide efficient and proactive service that enhance our quality of life and achieve our vision. All of the words have meaning, but the word efficient is probably the most important word in that. Council is very clear and very passionate about us being good stewards of the resources we've been provided. And resources come in the way of capacity of staff, equipment, programming that we do. And their challenge to me as the city manager was, are we doing the right things right? And if you're doing the right things right, then chances are you're really efficient. But oftentimes, we get in the habit of doing something because that's the way we've always done. And that's kind of a comfortable place to be, but nine times out of 10, it's not an efficient place to be. And the reason for that is technology changes. People come and go. New ideas come and go. There are new challenges and new opportunities in the community, and every one of those presents a different opportunity to be efficient. And so all of that is important because internally, we've taken that word to heart. And so in the 187-item work plan, there are a lot of items geared toward process. We call internally 2018 the year of process because we are constantly challenging what we do and asking the question, is that the right thing's done right? Or are we doing that because that's the way we've always done it? Bastrop's not unique. A lot of organizations getting that stride, and, you know, you get a new city manager, so you get to retool what we've done and ask that question. So we have a lot of things in our work plan that are causing us to reevaluate where we are. That's also the reason one of the items got put in the work plan at council's request, and that is, is that we have joint meetings with the 13 boards and commissions. Because conditions have changed, and we owe each board and commission that's appointed by the mayor, ratified by the council, who serve in a policy position to stop and ask, is the purpose of this board still relevant for the conditions, or does it need to be tweaked, or looked at differently? Is there an enhanced role or a little different role that needs to happen? So that's what has caused these meetings to happen, and it really stemmed from the conversation around our mission statement. One of the things that council came up with are nine focus areas, because it's not good enough to have a vision statement and a mission statement and say, go forth and conquer. You know, that means we're just all over the page and we never really accomplish anything. So one of the challenges that I recognized very early on is we don't have enough resources to cover the needs that we all know, evidenced by the 187- to cover the needs that we all know, evidenced by the 187-item work plan that will take us five-plus years to accomplish. So, I asked Council for some direction. I said, "I need you to tell me what are the important things we need to be spending our time on?" And so, Council came up with these nine items. And number one is fiscal responsibility, because at the end of the day, the most important role we play is ensuring fiscal stewardship to you, our citizens. And that's why efficiency is so important. Doing the right things right, making sure that we've managed the money appropriately, and we've spent it on the right things in the right way. The second item is economic vitality, and that's creating sustainability by leveraging tourism, infrastructure renewal and investment, enhancing public-private partnerships, and the efficient planning and development processes, and fostering an inclusive and diverse environment that encourages entrepreneurial ventures. And I sound like a broken record, and I hope all of you can one day give my speech, because when you do, then I know we have been efficient. But, 41% of the general fund's revenue comes from sales tax. Less than a third comes from property tax, which is really one of the more stable sources of revenue. So, while we are delighted and very grateful for 41% of our sales tax, that means we need a growing, robust economy, because sales tax is based on consumer confidence. So, the minute the bottom falls out, or something happens, and we feel less secure with our money, sales tax drops. And now, we've got some really tough choices to make, because it represents 41% of our budget. Recognizing that Smithville and Elgin are growing their economies, that reduces the number of people that come to Bastrop and shop, and we're glad that they are. I personally think that that strengthens us as a region. But there's also a huge threat to us. There is a half a million square feet being designed, and will be under construction in the next two to three years at State Highway 130 and State Highway 71. That's huge. The reason for that is, is that there are a lot of people that now come into Bastrop because there's a food desert, there's not an HEB between here and past the airport. Well, there'll be one at State Highway 130 and 71. And that half million square feet, they're going to have some retail opportunities that are different than the ones we have, and they won't come here when we have an opportunity, because they'll already be there. Retail stores will pick their sites, and they won't cannibalize themselves. And once they locate one place, they're not going to move within a certain distance. So, it's a lost opportunity for us. Our concern is, is that the people that are currently driving to Bastrop to shop from the south will just drive straight on through and go to 130 and 71. So, knowing that we have that, tourism becomes hugely important. And so, one of the things that we spend a lot of time on is leveraging our resources to get people to come to Bastrop and put their hand in their pocket and spend money. I like to say, it may not be what brought you here, but it sure will help you keep you here. And we want people to be delighted when they come to Bastrop and go, "Oh, I didn't know that was going on. Oh, my gosh, I didn't know that was going on." And I post on Facebook all the time, the things that my husband and I do, to help people understand how diverse our quality of life is here, to encourage people to come to Bastrop, because you never know from one day to the next what the exciting thing is you can do. Communication, that's the next lead-in, is that we believe we've got a great story to tell. I often say, the best value any community has is its local government, because we do a great job of providing a quality of life that you've come to expect, enjoy, and take for granted. I believe, on average, in property taxes, you pay somewhere around $2.34, $0.35, somewhere in there, per day in property taxes. I drink a venti skinny cinnamon dulce latte from Starbucks decaf every day, and it's $5.34. It's half the price of my cup of coffee. And so, I know beyond a shadow of a doubt, it's the best value in town, but you probably don't know that, because we failed to tell our story. So, because of that, we've made a conscious choice to do some reorganization, because we recognize that good customer service really is value. We can be nice and tell you no, and some folks think that's customer service. I happen to think, if we can provide you great value and give you, as a citizen, what it is you're looking for, that's better than being nice to you. So, recognizing we have a great story, Council wants us to make sure that we're communicating. So, we've reorganized. We created the Hospitality and Downtown Department, which Sarah's the Director of, that has the multimedia department. Colin Guerrero in the back is our Chief Storyteller. We've not named him, the multimedia director, or the communication specialist. He's the Chief Storyteller. That's his job, is to get our story out every day, whether it's through video, whether it's through social media, through a newsletter, whatever that is, he's not confused as to his role. He is the Chief Storyteller. We also put Convention Investors, or the Convention Center, under Hospitality and Downtown, and we're leveraging those resources, again, to be efficient. Uniquely Bastrop, Council is adamant that we leverage what we're good at and not become what everybody else is. And so, uniquely Bastrop is to maintain and enhance our historical community feel and leverage the unique combination of our community cultural and recreational assets that make Bastrop a special place to live and work. The Mayor and I are all the time meeting with new developers that are interested in coming to Bastrop, and it's always interesting to tell our story. And by the time they leave, boy, they're excited, and they want to move to Bastrop too, because, man, y'all are in this special place. And we're like, yeah, we know. We need to make sure everybody knows how special we think Bastrop is. Organizational excellence, that's the category that really gets into that process. That's when we look within and challenge. That's the way we've always done it, and ask the question, are we doing the right things right? Multimobility is another focused area, because we recognize that the United States is in a unique situation that's been deemed that perfect storm, that your millennials are now a serious demographic of their own right. You've got aging baby boomers that are now empty nesters, and the one thing they have in common is, they don't want to have to get in the car and fight the traffic to go somewhere. They want options. So, we're focusing on walkability. We're talking to a company about bike share. We're blessed to have a mass transit system in a small town under 10,000. And we appreciate the car, but we think that we ought to plan for all four of them and not just one of them. So, we're really working at how we can be a multimodal community. Community safety. When we say "safety," most people think law enforcement and fire, but it's a lot of things. It's code enforcement, it's health issues that we need to begin to address. We are a small town at night, but we're a much larger city during the day, with a lot of people traveling through Bastrop, through, either to get to Austin or Houston, or to go to College Station. And we're blessed that they stop and visit and shop, but we need to up our game in that area. We recognize the unique environment, and you know, not only our parks, but our river, and what an opportunity that that provides us. And then the last thing that was important to them is that we manage the growth. We need to do it smart. We need to do it from a sustainability standpoint. We need to do that, so we don't end up looking like everybody else, because we are uniquely Bastrop. So, these vision, mission, and focus areas, along with our budget and our 187-item work plan, are now all creating a level of strategic thinking that work together. Policy is now in sync with operations, and the policy direction that we get, we now implement on a day-to-day basis from an operational standpoint, so that you get good government done right and done well, so.
Thank you, Ms. Linda. We're going to just kind of do an overview on Main Street for everybody watching from home, and anybody in the room that needs a Main Street refresh. I don't think there's many of us. Council and Board members do have a packet of information that contains the current Main Street Advisory Board work plans, as well as information about the National Main Street Center and Bastrop Main Street, which celebrated its 10th anniversary this year in 2017. So, we are a little different than most other city boards. The Main Street Program is based out of Main Street America, which used to be the National Trust for Historic Preservation. It's a community revitalization program that started in the early '80s. And so, we have a set of criteria that we report to annually, to the Texas Historical Commission, who then relays that information to Main Street now in Chicago. And so, we have certain things that we have to do, whether Council wants us to do them or not. I guess is the easy way to say that, so that we can get national accreditation every year. Downtown revitalization, at its core, is a community-wide effort, and I think that that's really important to note. And so, we've got, of course, our Main Street leadership sitting with us here at the table, but Main Street encompasses far more than those folks just sitting here at the table. We rely heavily on our volunteers, and have since Bastrop Main Street was brought to life in 2007, and we have a continuous need for additional volunteers. So, if you're sitting at home, I'm going to make a plug, and you want to get involved in downtown and make Bastrop a better place to be, give us a call, because we'd gladly put you guys to work. Bastrop Main Street Program, a lot of people don't realize, is 62 blocks, so we actually start over by Coffee Dog and go all the way down to the movie theater. So, when we're talking about the Main Street Program area, we're talking more than just the typical Main Street that everyone thinks of when they think of downtown Bastrop. We did, I do want to mention the four committees. This is something that was started in the early '80s, when the Main Street Program was instituted, that Main Street operates in a committee four-point approach, and that is Economic Vitality, Design, Organization, and Promotion. And we'll talk a little bit about specific projects with those. And I can't say enough about how ineffective we would be if we weren't able to rely on our partnerships with the various entities and organizations in town, from the Economic Development Corporation, Visit Bastrop, who's now off the ground, the Chamber of Commerce, the Art League, the Opera House, BISD, you name it. We need everybody to be successful at what we do. This is our mission and our vision and our core values. We reevaluate these every two years, as is required to receive national accreditation. So, these were redone in 2016, and will be relooked at again in 2018. The Bastrop Main Street Program's mission is that through collaboration with other organizations, and with volunteers' insights, talents, and energies, we will be a catalyst for the continued revitalization, preservation, and economic health of our historic downtown area. Guided by the Main Street four-point approach of organization, design, promotion, and economic vitality, we can continue to positively transform our historic downtown. The vision that the Board adopted is that we will positively influence the continued preservation, enhancement, and commercial vitality of our historic downtown as a distinctive destination that engages and inspires both residents and visitors. And then in 2016, we also adopted some core values, and we believe that our program participants are united in a strong belief that our downtown is the heart of this community and an asset worthy of preserving and nurturing. Downtown is fundamental to the city's economic, social, and cultural activity and the essence of its tourism appeal. We did an event in January called "The Big Idea," and kind of celebrated 10 years of the Bastrop Main Street Program. And I'm a newcomer. A lot of people in this room have been at this and downtown Bastrop a lot longer than I have, and have a lot to be proud of. But we've seen almost $26 million in reinvestment downtown since the program's inception, 70 new business starts, expansions, and relocations, 190 net gain in jobs, over 10,000 volunteer hours, 26 additional housing units, and 32 new downtown residents. The Main Street Advisory Board is really, I think, and I think Dick made me take this off the slide, no, I got to leave it. It's the heart and soul of the program. They are an advisory board, but I don't know what I would do without the folks sitting across the table from me. They're involved in advocacy on behalf of the program and its staff. They really do lead and guide the volunteer army that carries out the program of work of the program. They're the boots on the ground. You guys know I can't be everywhere at once, and I get a call several times a week from folks sitting in this room to let me know what's going on and things that we need to be aware of. They coordinate the four committees that we talked about earlier, are engaged in both short and long-term planning. As I mentioned earlier, they are unique from other city-appointed boards, since we do have reporting requirements that we have to adhere to. And again, I can't emphasize enough that they're really the heart and soul of the program. And that was us at the New York Center in January. Some of the priorities and accomplishments that were identified to work on in 2017, and some of the things that we wanted to focus on and were able to do today, and just to note, and I think I go into this a bit later, but the Bastrop Main Street Program has traditionally worked on a calendar year, so our calendar year started in January. But, real focus on retail recruitment downtown. We launched a new Table on Main, Farm-to-Table event last spring. We also participated in the statewide launch of downtowntx.org, and continue to participate in that program. Assisted with the construction and waste efforts in the Alley D parking lot process with our Public Works Department. Are almost done with our downtown parking signage improvements. Hosted the first-ever Imagine the Possibilities tour, and followed that up with an additional tour this fall. Have been working on the Culinary and Cultural District planning process, and we will have that report for you guys to look at at our January Board meeting. Revamped and made a few minor tweaks to the Lost Pines Christmas Celebration. Have been discussing the future of the Main Street Improvement Project and what that looks like, changing up our annual wine swirl, which is now our sip, shop, and swirl, to focus on retail shopping downtown. One of the things that we will always be doing is working on improving our volunteer retention efforts and our volunteer engagement efforts, and how do we cast a broader net. And then, of course, our ongoing efforts is our small business and entrepreneur support, our beautification efforts, and marketing and advertising, the grant program that we run with the EDC, and of course, promoting not just the Main Street Program events that are downtown, but everything that happens in our program area. And just a one small note, we did submit this week our final questions to be considered as part of the Deluxe Corporation Small Business Revolution Competition, which is really exciting. We hope to make it to the top 10, and then narrow down to 1. If we are selected, we'll have over $500,000 in small businesses, sorry, businesses downtown. So, we're really excited. 2018 and beyond, these are some of the topics that the Board and all the Council members have a copy of our current work plan. Since we have traditionally been working on a calendar year, we went through and updated our work plans over the last two months. Our plan is to extend our 2017 year through the summer, so that our new year will align with the city's fiscal year, now that the city is working on an annual work plan basis. So, the work plans that you see were originally created for 2017 and have been revamped to carry us over into the next six months. But, some of the topics that the Main Street Board has been discussing, and will probably want to have some conversation with Council about tonight, was the creation of the Hospitality and Downtown Department. Of course, the exciting launch of Visit Bastrop, the changes at the Community Volunteer Center and the Lakey House, realigning our work plan with the city's work plan. Traditionally, the Bastrop Main Street Program has worked in the traditional Main Street model, where our project committees were very specific and focused, and we've got two of our committees that are kind of working in the new non-traditional Main Street model, which is project-specific. And so, instead of an overarching goal of promotions, our promotions committee is actually working by event, and we've had some changes in the Economic Vitality Committee that are leaning in that direction as well. Volunteer cultivation, again, I can't talk about that enough. We always need more able bodies and more hands, and so, we invite you to join the Army anytime you'd like. Service standards downtown are a huge issue that we began to address earlier this spring with some training. We'll continue to have discussions about there in the city's current work plan. Connectivity to the Hyatt, and how do we increase support downtown for that? An ongoing training system for our small businesses, and then support for our local entrepreneurs. You know, and the big elephant in the room is the vacancies downtown, and how do we solve that issue and have a more vibrant downtown with not any empty storefronts? Discussions relating to Main Street Discussions relating to Main Street's presence on Main Street as opposed to the Lakey House, and then the development of a downtown visionary master plan. So with that being said, I did not specifically outline, and I have them in front of me, we have quite a lot of work plan items in the city's work plan, and you guys have all gotten a copy of that, that relate to the Main Street Program. But I really just wanted to open it up to the board and to council to specifically talk about any of those items or any of the items that we talked about on the last slide.
Before we do that, there's one thing that I wanted to, that is extremely unique about the Main Street Board, and I'm so proud of it, and I want, I'm preaching to the choir because you guys are aware of it, but I want the folks at home that are watching. One of the things that you guys do that other boards do not do is have a nominating committee. And it is my understanding that in order for folks to be nominated, they serve on a subcommittee. So it is an excellent way for someone who's interested in getting involved, they can become involved in one of your subcommittees. And then when you're bringing forward names, it's somebody that already knows what they're getting into, knows what their interest is, and has the correct skills and background. Not all of our boards are able to do that with the, with subcommittees, but so many of our boards do utilize volunteers. And I think you guys have just an absolutely stellar model of how to bring people forward on your boards. It also, from my perspective of what I've seen on the board, you are able to keep some of the institutional knowledge and also get new ideas on your board, so you're constantly refreshing your board, and you have opportunities for folks to get involved from the first day they volunteer, and then after they've worked, to be able to bring that expertise to the board. So I would encourage any of our other boards, if they have that opportunity, to really utilize our volunteers. We had our first annual board and commission's appreciation banquet, and Mayor Protem Schiff talked about, wow, everybody in one room, that's a lot of people, but that did not include all of the folks that volunteer. So we have a new energy in the city, and there are folks who are coming forward, and I get emails, how can I get involved? And I just really want to applaud you guys for including so many folks and for making sure that you have the expertise on your board that you need to move forward and be successful. So thank you for that model, and I don't know if that's a Main Street model, but that's excellent.
You can actually sign up online at downtownbastrop.com to volunteer if you're interested. Okay, so do you want to go through work plan or what? We can go through work plan items individually, if you guys want to do that. I've got them in front of me, so I will rattle them off and see if we have discussion about those, or we can address any of the things that, you know, Dick and I talked about and identified as what we thought might be worthy of discussion.
Well, and Mr., looks like Mr. Smith has some few things to say.
Your folders contain the work plans of the four committees. And if there's anything that you'd like to discuss there, ask us questions about, we'd be delighted to address those. The items, the blocks of green there are things that the committee and the board subsequently identified as program priorities for the Main Street Program.
So they're green because they're all already accomplished and you're looking for new things to do?
No.
Oh, not so much? Okay, I was just checking.
Overachiever. These colors were adopted before the city adopted their color scheme, so they do not
It's a quiet group tonight.
Really quiet. I guess we should always call meetings at 7:30 at night, maybe folks are tired. Is there anything that you are needing from council that you wish council would do and they have not done? Do you need anything from us to help you be successful?
This is, the Main Street Program is something that's not, its goals are not achieved overnight, just as the city. We know it's time-intensive, and it is also, for our activities, very labor-intensive, too. There is a rhythm to it. We are much looking forward to the Main Street Improvement Project to unfold later. We are hoping in the coming year to begin launching a planning effort, developing a long-range plan for the Main Street Program area that answers such questions as, where do we go for parking after this? Where do we build new shops? How do we include, increase flow from Main Street down to the river where there's increasing presence? How do we expand the experience for visitors and certainly draw locals to Main Street? We too are chasing the 41 or better percent.
Well, I just, I've had the opportunity to work with Main Street Programs in three different states, and I can tell you that to have a council and a city manager support the program the way that you guys do helps us tremendously, because there's a lot of things that need to be done that if you're not involved in the action down there are very minor things on the outside that are major on the inside. So I want to say thank you to you guys for just being a supporter, because it makes a huge difference in the work that we do downtown, and it makes a huge difference in the success of what we do there.
One of the priorities of the program that is emerging is a concerted effort to strengthen small retail business downtown. We do have facilities available. It's just capturing the dreams of the moms and pops who will do specialty businesses that can be economically viable on Main Street and the surrounding area.
I'm probably speaking from a position of ignorance, but can Visit Bastrop help you in your goals?
Certainly, certainly. Our outreach to distant audiences will be very dependent upon the channels initiatives that Visit Bastrop undertakes. Our outreach to local is largely through other channels, existing channels, to respect the limitations on hot expenditures, hotel occupancy tax expenditures. We are looking to Visit Bastrop eventually to provide us guidance on what kind of activities or assets would increase the attractiveness of Bastrop to the, to our target audiences, the age groups, the interest groups, whatever, who may avail themselves of the resources that we have in town.
I would like to point out, you know, for years, the Bastrop Main Street Program was really the sole source of marketing and advertising outside of the community, minus the Visit Lost Pines and what the Bastrop Marketing Corporation did. But all of, you know, as in Houston area and Austin Market, there was a lot of promotion and advertising that was coming out of this office. And of course, we're very thankful that Visit Bastrop is up and operational. They've got some billboards up on 71 that just switched out for Lost Pines Christmas and have done some television marketing in the Austin Market with CBS for Lost Pines Christmas. And so some of that responsibility that used to fall on the Main Street Promotions Committee and Main Street staff is going to be taken over by Visit Bastrop.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem Schiff, any thoughts or comments?
It's interesting, you caught me when I'm looking at the Design Committee, the Bridge Development, because that was a big discussion we just had.
Yep.
With the BAIPP Group. And since it seems to be a priority of your group as well, I would obviously recommend some coordination, substantial coordination, to see what they're doing with what you want done, and see if we can leverage that and get some efficiencies here.
And one of the reasons that Sarah is in charge of hospitality in downtown is for the very reason that you just mentioned, is there really, from a city perspective, needs to be one person that sees the various pockets and leverage, your favorite word, leverage, what's going on in town. And Sarah is very much a natural to that. She brings to the table a level of enthusiasm and passion. And when we capture that, and she is the staff liaison to Visit Bastrop and works hand-in-hand with the hospitality side, which is the convention and visitors, we've seen internally a real improvement in the communication. So I'm sure that in the community, that that is enhanced as well. And so the fact that Sarah is the liaison with both, she'll make sure that that connectivity happens.
And, of course, with Visit Bastrop as well. Those three groups really have to work together to promote, to get things done, to try to use your money as efficiently as you can, and leverage the abilities of the different groups to be able to bring the art, the art concepts together with the, maybe the program development that you have going on, with the marketing efforts that Dale has going on. And if we can get all those tied together, we'll be able to more efficiently get, get this town and downtown where you want it to be, or where we all want it to be. But obviously, you're the Main Street Board, so we've dropped it in your hands.
And that's really, was one of the points of having this joint meeting, for you to know, we're here, we, we want you guys to leverage the, the other boards in town, the other organizations in town. We did just meet with BAIPP, and we talked about when, when a visitor comes to town, they don't know what the separate boards are, they, they just want to come have a good, have a good meal, be able to walk around the, the river, go for a hike, have, have the experience. And when that is seamlessly done, and they're able to have not only nodes, different places along Chestnut and Main Street that they can find something to do, and different things to be interested in doing, it can cause them to stay in town longer. And we know, whether it's the 41% sales tax in our general fund, whether it's hot funds, every dollar we have is precious. And one of the things that we owe our citizens is that we are efficiently and leveraging every one of those dollars to the best of our ability, and we're really counting on you guys to help us make that happen. Councilmember Nelson, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Yeah, I think it speaks well to what, what we're trying to accomplish, speaks well to what we're, have said from the beginning, there's a new synergy going on within the city of Bastrop. And it's relationship between the city, the citizens, sometimes as evidenced by our boards and commissions, and sometimes the individual citizens, that's driving this process. And I think it's a very positive aspect of what we're trying to accomplish collectively rather than individually. And the discussion we had with the BAIPP, or BYE, however you might want to say it, the, anyway, the discussion we had with them was very consistent with the discussion we're having now, to work together collectively to leverage, again, one of those key words, the resources from the various committees and, and boards. And I, I just feel really good about this, and I, you know, congratulations to Dick on writing the, the possible $500,000 paper. I hope it worked. Well, we'll try to blame you. I'd like to talk, you know, Bastrop as a, as a city sits in a big county, and I know most of us are here tonight, we're talking about the city, but we don't need to forget the people that live out in the county. There's a whole lot more out in the county that there are than actually in the city. And I think one way that we can differentiate ourselves and make ourselves unique is to recognize how the agrarian roots of Bastrop. You know, we sit on the best productive soils, both the ranching and farming of any, any other side of Austin. The city of Algen has done really well in taking advantage of that. The city council has been very supportive of a lady by the name of Sue Beckwood and the Texas Local Food Network for attracting businesses and helping local farmers and getting food into the city. And I think we can do that, too. I know it was a few years ago, maybe four or five years ago, that the then-city council proclaimed Bastrop a culinary district. What makes a culinary district different than any other restaurant conglomeration in another city? And it's the, the ability to bring locally grown foods into restaurants. We have one restaurant in particular, the 602 on Main, that is really attempting to do that now. They're carrying my bacon for the Sunday brunch. And I think that's just one way that we can differentiate ourselves from the other cities around Austin, is to embrace and want to grow our agrarian side of the county.
Shanda?
So I'm gonna...
Shanda, you have to speak up, sweetie.
I'm gonna piggyback on Steve, and I agree, I grew up in the LBA area. And I was telling the organization committee that my family, you know, never really, we never went on Main Street. The only time we went on Main Street was on corporate. And I just think that we should pull, we have a big county and just have, work with the district, the school districts, have more events, school events, partnerships with schools, nonprofits, to bring people downtown. Because, you know, they'll pass, and they'll go straight to Walmart, not that that's bad, but just to visit Bastrop. And I really think we, my biggest passion is for the org, is volunteerism. And so partnering with, you know, BAIPP and other nonprofits, and helping their, help them get volunteers. We're wanting to do a volunteer database that we hope that maybe the city could help us with. What we're wanting to do is have potential volunteers, new volunteers fill out some kind of form, and they tell us exactly what...
You got to talk into the mic. You don't project it on a good day. You got to get into that mic.
And we're hoping that they tell us exactly what kind of volunteer opportunities they are interested in. Some people don't want to pick up trash, you know, for Keep Bastrop County Beautiful, but maybe they like data entry, and maybe that's what a non, you know, a certain nonprofit needs help with. So if we can, you know, you know, we're big on volunteerism, so we're wanting to, you know, get people to sign up to be a volunteer, but we match them with the nonprofits and with their skills. And so we want to work with the schools on that and internships, you know, on that. So that's what we're trying to promote. And I know other nonprofits like Bastrop County Cares is wanting us to do some kind of volunteer database as well. And so I think it would be a great opportunity for us to bring more people.
I'd like to speak to two of the things that you mentioned. I am, and I, I want to make sure that what I say is heard correctly. We are very interested in events, bringing people to downtown. But we do 71 special event permits with the city right now. I have a staff of 125 that do everything else to provide services, and that consumes somewhere between 90 and 92% of our time. So that 8% gets spent on 71 special event permits. So one of the things we talked about with BAIPP that I will challenge you with, and that is, why are we doing it? What is the goal, and how are you going to measure success? Because if we do something more than what we're doing, that means we've quit doing something else. So there has to be a return on investment, because we have maxed out on special events. And so one of the challenges that we're going to have to address, and we've got it in the fourth quarter, is the efficiency that we keep hearing about, is are those 71 special events the right 71? And are they generating the right outcome for the capacity that they consume? And are they generating the right outcome for the capacity that they consume? I don't know that people think about this, but our staff works Monday through Friday to make sure your toilets flush, your water runs, your streets work, and then they work all weekend to do these 71 special events to go back to work on Monday. So I, we just don't have it to give. So that's my challenge. We're all for it, but I need to know why, need to know what it's going to bring. The second thing you mentioned is volunteers. One of the things that is in our work plan that we're going to kick off this year is on the first of July, a newsletter will be going out to all of the citizens in the city of Basdrop as well as in our ETJ that's going to educate our citizenry on the opportunities to volunteer in Basdrop, including the 13 boards and commissions and then the organizations that support our mission and our vision. It will be across the street, it will be, I think it's the 15th of July, I think it's the second Tuesday of, of July. And it's going to be like a trade show. Every organization, every board will have a table and will have applications that we're redesigning, not based on who you know, but what you know, so that you can come in and do the very thing that you've suggested. And that is go from table to table and ask, what is, what is it you do? Am I the right fit? What's your passion? Maybe I don't want to be on your board, but I'd like to help with that because I like that. And so as the mayor has indicated, we're getting a lot of interest from people wanting to volunteer, but that's a great way for us to do that. The outcome of that is, is that we'll accept applications for board and commissions through that process. We'll also share that information, again, with the partners that help with our vision and mission. And then council will interview all of the applicants so that the mayor can make an informed decision about who to appoint. And then council, because they will have interviewed as well, will be in a better position to affirm that decision. My experience with this process is, is a lot of people ask to serve on a board because their neighbor does, so that's all they know to ask, but they really need to be over here and they didn't even know over here was an option. And they're way excited to be over here and they were just checking the box over here because they need to be involved. So I think that we're going a long way to begin to address that. The challenge with the database is, it sounds great in theory, except I have to have somebody that will maintain that database. And I'm back to capacity. In a former life, just so you know how passionate I am about volunteers. When I was city manager in my former life, it was in the 2008, 2009 timeframe when the bottom fell out of the economy. And I said to the organization, nobody is authorized to tell a volunteer no but me. So if you don't want them, bring me my cup of coffee and come in and chat with me. Because we're just not going to tell folks no. And at the height of that, we were generating in volunteer savings about $540,000 a year. So I appreciate and understand the power of volunteers. But did I mention I have 125 employees that 90 to 92% of their day are just doing the daily things? So if this is something we want to do, then we have to give up something. We can't keep adding because we are past capacity. And it takes all we've got to manage, so we need volunteer organizations that are clear in what they need, clear in what that volunteer is going to do. Because the other thing that I learned about volunteers is there's nothing more sad than to be passionate and excited and come to something and it not be what it was represented or not be able to be done. So we all appreciate volunteers, we certainly want to do that. The Board and Commission Fair, I think, is a great place to start. And then let's, just let this organically evolve. But I'm sensitive at this point in time with my 187 item work plan, of which 114 are supposed to be done this year, how all this is going to work out. So thank you for your ideas.
So just to add to that a little bit, Sarah was looking it up, it's July 17th, so-
July 17th, thank you.
To the point, it's already on the calendar. We, we've already committed to that. And another thing that the city manager has challenged you guys to do is to not just keep doing things because you were always doing things and to be leading by example and not just having words. That's one of the reasons we're having the volunteer fair in July. Because if you think about the timing we were doing previously, a couple of things. We, peoples were rolling off of boards in May. So if you are a new mayor, you are elected in early May, you're sworn in in the middle of May, and by June, you're trying to replace one-third of all the boards and commissions, trying to figure out whether you should put on a new person, whether you should reappoint somebody, and you're still trying to get your feet wet. But don't worry about a thing because you're now putting someone on a board that is three, two-thirds of the way through their year. And, and you're, so you're stepping into midstream. So by having the fair in July, it's setting the timing up that council will have had their retreat, the work plan is fresh, and when someone's coming on new to a board, everybody's on the same page at the same time and starting a fresh fiscal year. So that's just an example of how, you know, yes, we're still going to have boards and commissions, yes, you're still going to serve a term, but there's a way to realign things that we've been doing that, it doesn't mean the way it was done in the past is wrong, it means given a set of circumstances, this might be a better way to move forward. So what really strikes me about 71 events is there's 52 weekends, so-
And those 71 events do not include things like the 11 art walks, the 12 Farm Street operas, you know, they're on and on and on. Those are just special event permits that are processed through the city that require some type of street closure or something like that.
Thank you. And so for the perspective of leveraging and efficiency, it's, it's worth, I, I don't, I, I would, I'm prepared to say to anyone, let's be looking at all 71 of them. And there's a certain amount of effort that goes into it. And are we, was that the effort? Or should that effort have been combined with two other events? And rather than having 71, yeah, they were really good, we could have 50 wow factor events. And I'm not criticizing any one event, I'm just saying it's a great time to be looking at things and making sure we're getting advantage. Ms. Moore?
I'm curious, how many of those events are actually organized and done by the volunteer boards of the city?
I do not have that number, but we can definitely look.
I mean, percentage wise, I mean, is it, is it a large number that's done by the, the boards, the city boards? Or would the larger portion be those nonprofits?
The larger portion is the nonprofit events, I believe.
Okay. So, so maybe that's a task that, that we can get involved in contacting some of those nonprofits and coordinating some of that, figuring out the goods and the bads and the uglies.
So, so our, our committee was saying that we would create the form for the volunteer to fill out, but then we would give a form for the nonprofit to fill out. And it's, if we, if the city is okay with it, I do have a volunteer that would be interested in a website. That was what, kind of what I was asking for the city is to, to have this website, this tool that will, you know, kind of, I guess, they enter their information and it tells them the nonprofit based on their criteria. But that's really what that was. I'm not, I'm not saying more events for the city. It was just helping the nonprofits find those volunteers for those events. That's really what that was.
This is a topic that the organization committee has kicked around the last two meetings. One of the questions is, is there a low-cost database available that a volunteer could expertly maintain that data without imposing on city staff?
One of the conditions that we put on the community support grants that BPNL did this year is that on a quarterly basis, they have to meet with me because the journey's mine to take. One of the challenges that we have is, again, making sure that, that we spend our money appropriately. And, and what we learned through the presentations, or at least what I did, is that there could be a way for better communication and not everything requires money. One of the organizations that I went and volunteered, went and interviewed or met with to try to understand their story, space was an issue. We got plenty of space, so we could partner with that. So we're having our first meeting next week, and so that would be a great thing to put on the agenda. And I don't, I think you are on Keep Basdrop County Beautiful, so you'll be at that meeting. Or if not, invite yourself with who's coming to that meeting. And we'll pitch that conversation to that group and see if we can get some dialogue and what that would look like and see where we can take that avenue. Because part of what we've talked about with BAIPP, talking to you and this nonprofit group, is we need to get that synergy. There's an awful lot of silos out there. And there's a whole lot of folks working toward the same cause, but we're doing this the hard way by ourselves. And if we'll leverage and create some synergy, we all will work smarter, not harder. And Lord knows, we need some of that at the city. So if you're not coming next week, I'll tell you when it is and you come and let's talk about that with that group.
And I need to just shamelessly promote, I know we're talking about events, but in case you haven't heard, we're in the middle of Lost Pines Christmas season right now and this weekend is one of our larger weekends. We've got the Farm Street Opry on Thursday night, Christmas edition. You can still go see a Christmas carol rag at the Basdrop Opera House. Our Basdrop County Historical Society's rendezvous is Friday night, tour of homes on Saturday. The Basdrop Public Library is doing their open house all day Saturday with tons of children's activities. And if you haven't been downtown to see the Christmas lights or the River of Lights, thanks to BPNL for their generous contributions to ramp those up, you can do so on Saturday night during our annual Christmas parade, which kicks off at 6:00 PM, followed by a tree lighting ceremony down in Fisherman's Park, where we will have a 40-foot by 40-foot snow playpen, hot cocoa and stuff from the Coffee Dog, and lots of fun for the entire family. So, sorry, kept mentioning events and I felt I needed to plug everything going on right now.
Okay, I'm, what I don't want is for someone to go home and go, wow, I really wish I would have spoken up. So I'm trying to, you know, we all have things to do, I'm not trying to keep you here needlessly, but I really encourage, Ms. Long, we haven't heard much from you, Ms. Padre, we haven't heard much from you, just any, if there's things that you're concerned about, particularly requests for help or any clarification, please, please let us know. Okay, they're, they're both nodding that they are just fine. Council, Mr. Ennis, Mr. Nelson, Mayor Protem Schiff, everybody's good?
I do want to say, I'm your liaison and I've sat on the Main Street Board and I know how much time and effort and planning and involvement and volunteerism it takes to work on the events that you put together, to work on the programs you put together and to do what you do. And I just, I think on behalf of this council, if they'll let me, I want to say thank you to you.
Thank you. We appreciate the council and your support and the continuing of opening up communication. That's very important, I think, to all of us, individually as a board and, and our different organizations, so we thank you for that.
I think Dick Smith here needs a special shout-out too. He does a fabulous job. He spends a lot of time on this, keeps his finger on the pulse.
And he thought he was going to get rid of me in June, but thankfully, the mayor's switching that up and I get him a few more months, right?
That's right. Things are hanging on.
He's never going to get rid of me.
You can stop now.
We, we all appreciate Mr. Smith so very much. So it is 8:36 and, oh, Shanda, did one more thing?
One more thing. Since Sarah has gone, came to Basdrop, I just have to say that she is our rock and she has been great. You're, you've been our biggest, you've been everything for our group and-
Thank you.
-you've done so much for us and you keep us in line and you, you know, keep us what we're supposed to do and we appreciate you. And, and everything that you do for the, all the businesses downtown, I hope they appreciate you as much as we do and thank you for everything.
And thank you. I couldn't do it without the great support of my board, my volunteers, staff and the city. So it's, it's really a team collaborative effort. And so we've got a great group together and looking forward to see what 2018 brings.
Thank you.
So with that, it's 8:37. I always like ending meetings on a high point. So thank you guys so much for your time. Thank you, Sarah, thank you, city manager. And I'm calling our portion adjourned. Mr. Smith?
Ours is adjourned as well.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Colin.